I want to call the April 10, 2025, O'Fallon City Council meeting to order. Roll call, Bess.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Mark her in attendance when she arrives.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Hurwicke.
Mark him in attendance when he arrives.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Bibb.
Present.
Councilmember Coskella.
Present.
Councilmember Kewen.
Present.
Councilmember Ottemeyer.
Present.
Councilmember Cook.
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
Present.
All right, if everyone please stand for the invocation by Chaplain Brandon Buford, with senior pastor of Lighthouse Church, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Councilmember Kewen.
Good to see you all again. I do apologize for not being here at the last time I was supposed to be. The traffic got a little at me, but thank you for giving us the opportunity to pray over these council sessions. So I invite you to bow your head as we pray. Lord, I've prayed a lot over these council men and women, and I know that the weight of leadership, the weight of making decisions can sometimes be daunting. But God, I pray again that you would let your divine wisdom rest on each one of them. Wisdom as they make the right choice, courage to make right choices. Lord, that you would continue to let them lead with integrity, with justice, with honor and love. I pray that you would be with them in every decision that's going to be made today, in every discussion that goes back and forth, because in the multitude of councilors there is safety. And I pray that you would give them the right way to lead this city forward. Thank you for letting us become a city that has been blessed by you. And I pray this in your name, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Folks, you have an agenda in front of you. What's a pleasure?
Motion to approve, Ottemeyer.
Second, Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Ottemeyer, second by Councilman Bibb. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Just one thing, Honorable직원 officers report. We have a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
I just want to introduce some of O'Fallon's real heroes here. They're the first people that you hear from when you call on your worst day. They're the first people that offer service of protection when you need help. So therefore, I'd like to read this proclamation on behalf of O'Fallon City Council and the residents. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas O'Fallon Police Department Communications Officers answer 911 and administrative phone lines ensuring citizens' emergencies and non-emergency calls for assistance are handled effectively, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the O'Fallon Police Department Communications Division, and whereas the Police Department Communications Officers are the true first responders and the most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas Police Department Communications Officers are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities via radio, providing their information, and working to ensure their safety, and whereas the Police Department Communications Officers of the O'Fallon Police Department Communications Division have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals and the safety of our citizens, and whereas in 2022, the city of O'Fallon rightfully changed the designation of our Police Department Communications Officers from civilian to public safety to ensure that the retirement system is the same for these vital employees as for police officers. Now, therefore, Bill Hennessy, mayor, and the city council of the city of O'Fallon, Missouri do hereby proclaim, April 13 through the 19, 2025, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and joining and honoring these men and women whose diligence and professionalism help keep our city and citizens safe, and witness of, on this day, April 10, 2025.
On behalf of all the communication operators, I want to thank everybody for this recognition. As an individual who has traveled across the state many hours, many days, speaking with elected officials across the state for reclassification of 911 dispatchers to first responders, as they rightfully should be, it is an honor to be a part of a city that has recognized our 911 operators. These are a lot of hard, dedicated men and women back here, and I'm proud to serve with them, and I want to thank you.
Our first speaker is Mr. Dinoff.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, city public advocate, running for city council next year. It's a bittersweet time to be before the city council this evening from the election. I'd like to talk about some resolutions here. The resolution that's on the consent agenda, $1 million for parking lot maintenance, and I believe that's the crack ceiling program. What a waste of taxpayer dollars. Nobody's really out there supervising this contractor. They're kind of picking and choosing what they want to seal and what they don't want to seal. It's kind of interesting, but I think that we could do that in-house for approximately $300,000 for materials, and we already have the staff and the expertise to get it done in-house. So this $1 million in the consent agenda, which none of you will discuss or debate before the public, because you want to bury it inside a consent agenda so nobody knows about this $1 million contract, it's a waste of taxpayer dollars. Resolution B is Peterbilt Maintenance Parts and Labor for our trash vehicles. It's kind of interesting, because we have, I believe, two mechanics, maybe three mechanics, located at the Environmental Services Building off of Hoff Road. And to be paying $143.50 per hour for labor is just kind of ridiculous. And then it goes up to $148 in year two, $154.30 in year three, and then for other heavy-duty repairs, it's basically about the same. So where, again, we hire, we have, I believe, seven to nine mechanics that are full-time on the city's rolls. If you go to the St. Louis Post-Dispatch, you could see their salaries are paid very handsomely with benefits and pension through loggers. So again, we're wasting taxpayer money. Resolution C on the agenda is a grant for single-stream recycling that we should have never got rid of in the first place. What in the world are we having our welfare hands outright for $540,000 in qualified expenses? I'm going to find out where this grant is through. It's probably through the Regional Waste District, and I'm going to oppose this grant. Resolution D on the agenda, installation of surf turf, or synthetic turf at Ozzy Smith Sports Complex, $4.1 million.
You have 10 seconds.
Again, a waste of taxpayer money, especially when it's only going to last for seven years and it's going to need to be replaced. So $4.1 million is a waste of money.
Mr. Dinoff.
And finally, the Missouri Blue Shield Program.
Mr. Dinoff. Sir, your time is up, sir. Next speaker is Ms. Jamie Crunk.
My name's Jamie Crunk. I live at 1611 Platinum Court for a few more weeks. I don't understand why Mr. Dinoff lives in O'Fallon if he doesn't like any of the things that we're doing. Keeping your parking lots up to date, being able to pick up your trash trucks to work on them on a good lift, these are all things that the city needs, and we have to make sure that we continue to keep them up to date. Thank you to all of our great 911 dispatchers. They're spectacular. I've used them a few times. I know we have the Westoff Building on the agenda tonight, and I'm excited for that. I remember going into the Westoff Building and shopping when it was still a store, and they carried everything. You could buy groceries, clothing, farm supplies, tractors, you name it, you could buy it there. But continue to do everything that you're doing. I think you guys are great, and I'm looking forward to being able to watch you, even though I won't be able to be here.
Thank you. We have no more citizens' comments. Brings us to ward reports. Ward four, Mr. Ottemeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, things have changed a little bit, so I'm going to try to get through this. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve this council and the residents of O'Fallon for the past six years. The voters have spoken, and it's clear that they're ready for new leadership in Ward four. As I step away from public office, I plan to focus more on my business and spend some much-needed time with my wife. I went to the residents of O'Fallon to know that every vote I cast was made with the best interests of our entire community, and not just the interest of a few. I also want to take a moment to recognize the dedication of every elected official on this dais. Each of them has made real sacrifices in their personal and family lives to serve this community. I know many residents are happy with the direction our city is heading and with the decisions this council has made. Unfortunately, happy people don't always show up to vote in municipal elections, and that honestly needs to change. These officials give their time, talents selfishly, selfless-ly. The pay is minimal, but the responsibility and time commitment are significant. The impact each and every one of them has on your daily life is far greater than most realize. Please, please, take the time in April to honor their service. Give just 15 minutes of your day to cast a vote. With voter turnout often under 10% in our municipal elections, it's hard to say we're truly honoring the sacrifices every one of these individuals make on your behalf. Your vote does make a difference, and not voting can have real consequences that affect your life and the future of our city. Once again, I want to thank the people of O'Fallon for the privilege and honor of serving you. I will never abandon the people of this great city, and I will not fade into the twilight of council history. I will continue to serve as God leaves me until I have the opportunity to serve again. Ottemeyer out.
Thank you, Mr. Ottemeyer. Mr. Kewen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Mr. Ottemeyer, it's been a pleasure, sir. You've been a pillar of this community for 30 years. I'm sure that's not going to change. Yep. I mean, you've served on various boards, commissions, et cetera. You've volunteered time in many ways in this community, including as a city councilman, in which you represented yourself very well, very well. I'm going to miss you, my friend, at least up here. I'm certainly not going to miss you out there, because I'm not letting you go that easily.
Thank you.
Tom, Deena, I'm going to miss you both as well. I've enjoyed serving with you both, and I hope that whatever your next chapter is, I hope you find everything you're looking for. I hope you find happiness, and I hope to see you around at some of the city events.
You get to say goodbye to them in two weeks.
Oh, well, then I'll repeat myself in two weeks. I didn't want to feel like I was leaving anybody out, but...
No, Jeff, this is my last meeting, because I won't be here at the last one, so...
Right, right. Well, nevertheless, it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you, sir, and I look forward to whatever comes next. And you know, when you get there, I'll be by your side.
I appreciate that.
That is, sir. Ward five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmen Hurwicke and Smith, I'll get to you guys in two weeks, but to Councilman Ottemeyer, we will miss you, and best of luck in what comes around. So on another note, I have been really bragging over the last several months about our Olympic athlete, Brandon Miller, who went to Paris. And for those who might not know, his brother, DJ Miller, played for the Kansas City Chiefs up until recently, and apparently he was just drafted by Michigan Panthers in the Arena Football League. So if you're a sports fan, be sure to cheer, even though he's not a battle hawk, be sure to cheer for DJ Miller when he's here in town in a couple of weeks. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ottemeyer, we didn't always agree up here.
We're not supposed to.
We're not supposed to, you're right. But we always stayed friends, very professional. I've enjoyed working with you. It's been an honor and a privilege, and I know we'll still see you around, because it's in your heart to serve, and we've enjoyed having you on.
Thank you.
I do have to cover a little bit of business before we all sit up here and cry tonight. We do have, Ward five has a HOA next Wednesday night, Autumn Oaks, at 6 o'clock here at City Hall. And then again, the bulk drop-off is Saturday, so do your spring cleaning and bring everything over to the transfer station Saturday morning. So again, everybody have a blessed Easter, enjoy time with your family, and Ottemeyer, Ottemeyer out for you.
Thanks.
Ward one.
Thank you, Mayor. And I too, Jim, we came on together, so now we're also leaving together, right? So enjoy working with you, so good luck on your future endeavors.
Thank you.
And you stole my thunder, Debbie. My husband keeps reminding me about the bulk drop-off, because he wants me to get rid of stuff. Great, thanks.
Mr. Roth.
Mr. Ottemeyer, from the short time I got to know you, I enjoyed your company, your wisdom, and I wish we could have a little more time up here, but I'm still waiting on that Sunday night text.
Coming up.
So I'll see you on the outside, and I'll see you around. Thanks for everything.
Thanks, Jim.
And then I got a small business for April 12, Saturday, over at the Elk Lodge for all the veterans. There's a veterans' benefit affair from 10 to 4, I do believe. If you've got any questions about any kind of claims or information about anything, come over to the Elk Lodge, and we'll get you set up. That's all.
Thank you. Ward two.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ottemeyer, it's been a pleasure working with you the last several years, and I look forward to watching you in your future Ottemeyer opportunities, how is that, you know, whatever that brings. And, you know, I just, on another note, I just want to congratulate and recognize the dispatchers for all of the hard work that they do. I'm really glad that we get to recognize them every year. And lastly, we attended the O'Fallon Police Department's annual award ceremony last weekend, and it was just really great to see everybody doing such great things in the community and making our community such a great place to live. So thanks to everybody.
Mr. Hurwicke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't have much prepared for tonight. I have a lot more I'll say in a couple of weeks, but first off, Jim, it's been a fun ride the last six years. I wish you all the best. Enjoy your time with your beautiful wife, grow in your business, and do a lot of fishing.
That sounds like a great idea.
Last but not least, Ward three.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go first, since I took Steve's seat. Ottemeyer, it's been a pleasure. Actually, looking forward to what you'll be able to do from the outside, so continue to cheerlead, continue to give back to the community. It's the support the council needs, and with us losing people like Jamie, it'll be kind of a good-timed replacement, so looking forward to it. Onto that, the last day, yesterday and today, I had an opportunity to go to Jeff City with St. Charles Vision Leadership and kind of quasi-St. Charles Municipal League to talk to our St. Charles legislators over some bills that are going through. It was nice to see, I think every House rep came and met, spent some hours with us. They, like, we were just talking. They don't all agree all the time. They actually had a little bit of impromptu debate in front of us about the video poker machines and private businesses, so it was fun to see, but it was really good to see how they're interacting, how well they're flowing, and then this morning, having breakfast with the governor, to hear him speak so highly of the St. Charles delegation. It's not the feeling that we've gotten in the last couple of years, and you can just tell the tone in Jeff City's completely changed, and especially with St. Charles' representation. So very exciting to see how that continues to grow, and I'm thankful for the time that they spent with us today. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Coskella.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, man, such a role model up here on council, out in the gloom, out in the community. Everywhere you go, you just leave a lasting impression on everybody. A great mentor to me. I'll never forget the times we spent here, working hard, trying to serve our residents, and I know you'll continue to do that. I can't promise that I'm not going to borrow. It's a great day to live, work, pray, and play.
Somebody's got to.
I'm going to keep that going for you, and Coskella out.
Well, before we get to Mr. Snowden's report, Mr. Ottemeyer, I just want to say thank you for your years of service to the great city of O'Fallon in the past couple of years as the president pro tem and keeping this council informed and everything else. And, you know, I know you'll do great things to help this great city to move along, and on behalf of my wife Debbie and myself, thank you for being my councilman. So thanks for all you do, and good luck in your future endeavors, brother.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. As you may recall, staff briefed you last fall regarding the damage from the March 2024 hailstorm and how staff intended to go about completing repairs. At that time, this council gave permission to continue the process of assessing damage and locating a firm to assist with the design and construction administration for the project. I want to announce to you that the next step in the process has occurred, as I signed an agreement this week with Grayco Roofing Consulting to provide those services. The firm was selected from three companies in a qualifications-based selection process as outlined in our financial policies. Staff will continue to notify you on next steps and bring those items to you that require council-level approval. I would like to wish a belated happy birthday to Councilmember Cook. And lastly, on behalf of myself and all of our staff, I'd like to take a moment to thank Councilmember Ottemeyer for his years of service and how much he has helped our staff over those years, especially during his time as president pro tem. It has been a pleasure to work with you, sir. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Brings us to old business. Brings us to Bill 7739. Motion for second reading by title only.
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
Second by Councilwoman Cook. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7739, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance declaring the Westoff Grain and Mercantile Company Building to be a landmark of the city of O'Fallon and establishing standards relating to the treatment of the site and designating it as the James Ottemeyer Memorial Building.
You kill me.
I'm sorry. I thought that was there. It's not on the title. I apologize.
That was good, Mr. O'Keefe. Motion for final passage.
Except for that last part, Ragsdale. Cook.
Second by Councilwoman Cook. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
10 yes, 0 no. 7739 passes, becomes ordinance number?
7200.
7200. Thank you, Bess. Questions or comments on the committee and commission reports? Seeing none. Questions or comments on the consent calendar? Motion to approve, Hurwicke.
Second, Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke, second by Councilman Kewen. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Motion, consent calendar's been approved. Brings us to new business, brings us, first, is a public comment to consider approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use to the owner of Caledonia Flats to allow residential dwellings in a non-residential structure under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 211 Rushway within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Is there someone here to present this?
Did you try turning it off and turning it back on?
It's funny, I just had my son do that at home. Our internet's out.
It doesn't recognize it. That question, oh, it shows it doesn't recognize the USB drive.
I mean, this is brand new, and just, Larry just worked an hour ago.
If it doesn't start, you can't pass it.
So you blow into it, that was my trick.
There you go.
Oh, there you go.
See? Is it this one?
He's got special powers.
Magic touch.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Clearly, I do not have the magic touch.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Steve Valentine. I'm at 4 Research Park Drive, St. Charles, 63304. I'm here tonight representing Caledonia Real Estate Holdings, here to discuss our conditional use permit at 211 Rushway. This is the location of the site. It is directly south of the Barron Swim School and north of the now-in-progress Cambria Hotel site, which is just north of the Rush soccer fields. We are partnered up with Kukar Management. It is the same firm that we have partnered up with to do the Cambria Hotel on the adjacent site. They bring years of experience in this kind of work, in this kind of construction, and we welcome their participation in this project. It is a mixed-use project with 92 apartments, 81 of those being one-bedroom, 11 being a two-bedroom. There are 154 added parking spaces. There's a subsequent slide, which I'll get into the details. Currently zoned C2, the conditional use is to allow residential use in a commercial zoning district. The commercial space does have a resident already being assigned to that space. The name of that company is Eotech. And again, I have some further slides on them, but they are a commercial military-grade firearm company, but not actual firearms. It's all the accessories for firearms. I actually learned last week that the local police force may use some of their products. And then combined with that retail location, it's a joint offering between Eotech, in which there will be a virtual component, a virtual sports component, that will be located within the Cambria Hotel, again, across the street. So on one side, we'll have the retail merchandise location, and then in the hotel, we'll have the virtual sports location. This is the site plan. Again, it's sandwiched between the Barrons and the hotel. The commercial space is at the west end, shown here, the 154 parking spaces shown surrounding, as well as along the highway. This is different in that previous presentations, we required some of the shared parking component that this site has as part of the ability to meet the parking requirements via a parking study. In this case, though, with the modifications that have happened to the facility, we are actually able to meet the required parking spaces per current ordinances, so the shared parking is just an additional benefit for the Caledonia Flats. We also meet the... We also meet the required bike parking at the site, which is on the east end of the site. This is our landscape plan presently. There's some actually not, the grass isn't shown here, but there's some tree planting between the parking and the highway, as well as sprinkled in the green space throughout the site. The various species are listed here over on the loft, and these will all be planted at the end of the construction so as to not kill any of our plantings. Elevation-wise, the entire design was done by the same architect that did the Cambria Hotel. The intent is for it to match style, color, the entire look and feel is to match that of the Cambria. And I have another slide here kind of showing that, the better kind of details, the kind of cohesive approach that is the intention here. This is just some side views of the elevations all around the building, right? South side, west side, east side, north side. Pretty straightforward and consistent, very clean lines. Honestly, internally, we intend to actually use this architect for some additional projects because he's, we feel like he's done a very good job in meeting the intended purpose for this project. One of the comments that came back with our submission was just a detail section showing that the mechanicals are hidden within the roof parapet. I mentioned Eotech earlier. Eotech is a premium, commercial, military-grade electro-optics and night vision technology company. They've been around for more than three decades. It's all extremely high-end product. I personally have looked on their site and determined they might be actually a little out of maybe my endeavors. We have scopes. I think the starting price is around $1,000, and some of them, for the real enthusiasts, run all the way up into the teens. There was a scope on there that I looked at the other day, that was $15,000. And it shocked me, but apparently it is quite the product and is in demand. In fact, our seller inquired about getting one for himself. This is a rendering of the retail space that will be within the Caledonia Flats. It is only a rendering because they have never done this anywhere. This will be the first in the country. This combination retail and virtual studio is their premier site for it, which I found interesting, considering they've been around for 30 years and are very well-recognized within the industry and within their space. This is a typical floor plan. And the reason it's typical, the first floor's got the commercial on it. So there's two central elevators located here, stairs. It's a pretty straightforward layout. The two bedrooms come in at just over 1,200 square feet. The one-bedrooms are just over 800 square feet. And as I mentioned, Councilwoman Cook, we did discuss pricing for both the one- and two-bedroom units. The one-bedroom, our current target is around 1,500 a month, and our two-bedroom, around 2,100 a month. Our early competitive analysis shows that this should actually perform very well and keep our occupancy rates full year-round. This is a rendering of interior one of the units and what we expect to see within their very clean lines. The apartment residents will have access to the amenities within the hotel. There is a pool and a fitness center there that will be included in their monthly rent. There is, as I mentioned, with the two elevators, there is a mail kiosk and package pickup area there at that elevator location. Got about a minute and a half. There was another question in regards to continuation of service, previous offering to this offering. All the virtual sports and gaming that was at the Caledonia Flats previously is now housed within the Cambria. So from a services perspective, there is no loss there. And then also, previous submission had a restaurant in the Caledonia Flats that was focusing more on a breakfast service with no breakfast service over at the hotel. That will now all exist at the hotel. So breakfast, lunch, and dinner will be served at the hotel. Questions? Seeing none. Steve, if you would step aside, this is public hearing. Mr. Deenoff.
Thank you very much, members of the city council. My name is Arne CAC Deenoff, city public advocate. I want to start out by saying this comment. The community is highly fed up with apartment buildings. Let me repeat it. Look on any social media site, the city residents are highly fed up with apartment buildings. They are sick and tired of apartments being built, storage building facilities, banks, and car washes. Our community of 103,000 people have had our fill of these four categories. It's time to home in on sales tax-related issues or sales tax-related economic development opportunities that are going to generate sales tax for our future operations and to pay for city services. This project has been here, I believe this is the fourth time. They went from 15,200 square feet of retail to 8,245 feet of retail, and now down to a merely measly little 820 square foot of retail, which is about the size of a two-car It's pretty ridiculous that this city council has fallen to these depths to allow this to happen. I cannot support this application. We need sales taxes. We need to stop offering tax abatements, no community improvement districts, no transportation development districts, no neighborhood improvement districts, no cutting of taxes for this applicant. This property is going to cost us rather than make us money, generate revenue in terms of paying for police services, ambulance calls, fire calls, schools, and other city-related services. I see nowhere in the packet a letter from the Wentzville School District who's bursting at the seams, a letter of approval, and that they have enough desk spaces for schoolchildren. Let's face reality, apartments bring school-aged children to the table. For those reasons, I cannot support this endeavor. You guys are giving up a lot of the first-floor retail, and you're selling our city out, in my opinion. For those reasons, I cannot support this application.
Our next speaker is Ms. Jamie Crump.
I think this is one of the better apartment complexes around. They have decent rent rates. If you've, I don't know if you've checked into renting any place. Unfortunately, there's a lot of people around O'Fallon who can't afford to purchase a home, and they need apartments so they have a place to live. Most of these apartments are one-bedroom, so you're not going to have a whole lot of school kids. And so we do have a little bit of retail space. It's in a great area. It's going to draw a lot of people because of being close to Caledonia, which is an up-and-coming spot in O'Fallon. And I have to say, it's a good place to put apartments where they aren't right on top of other residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other public hearing citizens' comments. Ms. Valentine, you want to come back up? Any questions for Steve? Go ahead and close the public comment. Any other questions? Thanks, Steve. Brings to Bill 7741. Motion for first reading?
Kaskala.
Motion by Kaskala, second.
Bibb.
Second by Councilman Bibb. Councilman Kaskala, please present the bill.
Bill number 7741, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owners of Caledonia Flats to allow residential dwellings in a non-commercial structure under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 211 Rushway within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Next is a public comment, to consider approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to 1155 Technology LLC to allow a hotel under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at Technology Drive near Weldon Spring Road within the great city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Is there someone here to present this? Joseph, you want to come on up, bud?
Hello. My name is Joseph Howley. I'm residing at 853 Willner Drive in University City. I'm a civil engineer with CEDC, and I'm here tonight bringing you a proposed Hampton Inn Hotel to be located on Technology Drive. Our request is for a conditional use permit approval. That's for a hotel in the C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Location is in the northwest corner of the intersection of Highway 4064 and Highway K on Technology Drive. I believe it's the Persimmon Point Development in that area. It's surrounded by a few existing hotels, storage center, a little, we call it a strip center, retail commercial center. The site location there, again, it's about a two-acre site, just under, again, existing zoning, C3 PUD Highway Commercial District, currently a vacant lot. Just a closer look at that, no development there. It's been pad-ready for some time now. Here's our site plan imposed on the existing site. We're going to put the hotel hopefully in the center and have circulation around it. The hotel will have 80 units. It'll be a four-story hotel. The PUD does allow six stories. The building area's total over the four stories is 55,000 square feet, plus or minus. Have a swimming pool, meeting rooms, fitness center, breakfast area, sports spaces. Parking lot will have 84 stalls of parking. We have two main site access points, both are existing on the roadway. Both are shared with the adjacent developments. Overall site coverage, we have about 67%, the rest being landscaped or open areas. There's existing stormwater retention basin that's actually off the site to the south. On this view, it's in the lower right, detention basin that'll have to be verified for our development. This is the black-and-white site plan, showing as you see, kind of a circular circulation around the centrally-located hotel. Just a little larger view of the colorized site plan, and that'll take us right into the landscape plan. Pretty much perimeter-based trees. We do have some clusters of landscaped areas near the entrance. The entrance is a port-a-cature, drive-through type of entrance. Here's the rendering. This is a Hampton Inn corporate design. They're very proud of design. It's that contemporary look that you hear so much about. I believe this is very, very similar to one that is existing on the north side of Interstate 70 in the city of St. Charles. Here's a look at the colorized building elevations, looking at the front with port-a-cature, and then the side view with the port-a-cature on the right side. There's a little building on the left side, a little stub out of the building, which is not the full story, is a little short, one-story area. That might be the pool, actually. Here's a look at the backside, the rear elevation, and the other end of the building. Color schemes there. This is just kind of an essential, what Hampton calls their exterior features, includes a lot of contemporary lines, window reveals, accent colors, a monolithic wall plane, and there's a fin and frame. It's that blue thing in the middle of the building there. So that is the latest and greatest from the world of Hampton Inn, and that, in summary, is our presentation.
Questions for Joseph? Seeing none. If you would step aside?
Did you want to?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kaskala.
Yeah. 80 units, you have 84 parking spaces with staff and no vacancy in having the 88 parking spots. Is there enough parking to meet the ordinance?
I believe that's the, is it one per room? I can't remember. I think it would have been noticed if we didn't meet the required.
One per room plus the employees on shift, so.
So it's right at, yeah, yeah. Right to capacity.
Okay.
Thank you very much, members of the city council. My name is Arne CAC Deenoff. This is a fantastic developer. This developer is really bringing real money to the table and investing in the future of our community. This Hampton Inn is a great addition to southern O'Fallon. It will generate state, county, and local sales taxes, which we need to start homing in on relying upon. This facility, this hotel, also will generate city hotel guest transient taxes. My question to the council and to the applicant, I brought it up at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, is there any way to have a component of retail space available at this facility, which is a win-win for both the community and the developer? It'll also generate additional sales tax that we sorely are missing and that we sorely need. This is a desired location, right against Interstate I-64. I ask this council not to give any tax breaks, no tax abatements, no special taxing districts that are surprises to residents and visitors alike. This is a sought-out parcel. It's a premium piece in our land that's available out there. Additionally, I'd like to ask a condition for this applicant, that human trafficking is a huge issue across our state of Missouri, where children and women are being moved through the hotel and motel systems throughout the United States and across Missouri. I ask you to place a condition on this applicant, that they provide human trafficking training for all employees on this subject, so they knew to be trained what to look for, when to call law enforcement, and when to get law enforcement involved. We need to crack down and make sure that no traffic, no human trafficking of children or women is being done here in O'Fallon. Unfortunately, I've seen it way too many times across our city, and I think that our police department and our detective bureau needs to home in on these issues. For those reasons, I support this applicant, I support this application, and ask unanimous approval of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make this short and sweet. I can't believe I agree with Mr. Deenoff on anything, but I'm glad to see that we're getting an upper-class motel in the city of O'Fallon. We should get a good overnight stay rate because of being close to the interstate, and it will generate some tax dollars for the city. So, in a good area. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and close the public comment. Any other questions for Joseph? Mr. Hurwicke.
I don't have a question. It's not really related to the conditional use permit, just want to get something on the record with the city staff. First off, just this site, when it was parceled out six years ago in 2019, this last two acres was hopefully dedicated for a hotel, and we're glad to see a hotel coming into it. My comment is for city staff, Mr. Snowden, Mr. Debell, and Mr. Montgomery. As this area has finally almost fully developed, one thing we have never really paid attention to or really looked at is, and I know it's probably more, we have to work with MoDOT, but the T-intersection at Weldon Spring and Technology. I know this hotel's not putting any extra really pressure on the traffic in that area, but I think we really need to take some time and figure out and work with MoDOT to see if we can find a solution for that, whether it's roundabout, which is something I personally enjoy, but not everybody does, or a three-way traffic intersection or four-way, because it does flow into the retail center, right? It's kind of northeast of this complex, so that's all I have to say.
Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mr. Hurwicke. And yes, you're right, that is MoDOT's road, and so it's not as easy as if it were ours. However, we continue to work with MoDOT to the extent possible on that whole stretch, so thank you.
Yeah, completely understand. Yeah, completely understandable, but just, you know, if we engage MoDOT and kind of get those conversations going, and hopefully someday in the future, we can figure out a solution.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I know, and MoDOT's pace is probably a long time in the future, but.
Okay.
May I add another comment? Yeah, and I really forgot to mention the owner franchise, the owner, Andy Patel. He's very excited to bring a hotel to this location. And there was a brief comment after the planning commission meeting on possibly putting some commercial space in it. This is a standard Hampton Inn design, there's really no room and no room to move things around, their floor plans are set, corporate level.
We understand that.
So, just want to add those things. Thank you.
Okay. You're next to a strip center, so. All right. Public comment's been closed, brings us to Bill 7742. Voice for first reading?
Hurwick.
Voice by Councilman Hurwick, second?
Thompson.
Member Councilman Thompson. Mr. Hurwick, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill number 7742, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to 1155 Technology LLC to allow a hotel under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located on Technology Drive near Weldon Spring Road within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you, sir. Next is a public hearing to consider approval and ordinance approving a final plan for Meadowwood Estates, Phase Three, subject to certain conditions and requirements. Someone here to present this?
My name is Ross Casman. I'm with a company called Engineering Surveys and Services with an office at 1113 Fay Street, Columbia, Missouri. Sean Garrison is also here from the developer, JES Investment, seeking approval of the final plan for Lot 3 of Meadowwood Estates. It's a three-phase, three-story, 54-unit, independent senior living building that very much mirrors the Phase Two development, the building itself, not the entire lot, but we have made some allocation for the proposed roundabout and intend to convey right-of-way for that, and also have limited access there at the center of the block. It's right-in, right-out only. The final plan does meet all the city requirements, does not require any additional utilities to be extended, and I'd like to briefly discuss the stormwater management. As mentioned previously in the staff report, we are meeting the stormwater quality and quantity requirements. Additionally, once construction is completed, all the stormwater from the Meadowwood development will no longer flow to the east across, at least toward, the school track and field, but will kind of split at the middle of the site around in here and go north along the property line and south along the property line. I know that's been a concern to the school. And finally, there's landscape, fence, and retaining wall buffering the two properties there at the east property line. And so, at this time, I and Sean Garrison would be happy to answer any questions regarding the Lot 3 final plan.
Sean, you want to come on up?
Absolutely.
Got any answers for me?
Depends on the question.
Well, Phase One, promised commercial on Lot 4. Phase Two, promised commercial on Lot 4. Phase Three, didn't promise commercial on Lot 4. We need commercial on Lot 4.
Yes, yes, sir. We are listing it, and we're trying.
I really, and I can tell you, one of these citizens' comments is going to come up and says, put a condition that you need to put the commercial. We need to, we need the senior housing, okay? And I'm just repeating what I said on last Thursday. We need the senior resident housing, and I know you probably already have a waiting list for Phase Three. I don't want to hold you up on getting this thing built, but I really hope, and I really hope, that you get to commercial on Lot 4 while you're building this, because I can tell you, you know, with all the seniors over there, I bet you can find something with all your residents there that will use Lot 4.
Yes, sir. And, you know, we've got this listed with prominent local broker, and surprisingly, he's gotten some interest in it. Surprisingly, one was for a children's sports building, which, not sure how that would be interesting in that spot. You know, the problems I think that he's seen, though, is that there, anyone that has been interested is kind of looking at some of the available spots instead of building new. Hopefully, we get someone to take it. We're happy to sell that piece.
Okay. As I said, I kind of beat you up on last Thursday, and I'm going to, told you I was going to give it to you tonight, and I'm going to give it to you again on the 24th for final reading, and I'm hoping to get some commercial, an answer for that.
Yes, sir.
Questions or comments?
Just that I totally agree with you.
Anybody else? You want to step aside? Mr. Deenoff?
Thank you very much, members of the City Council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoff, city public advocate. You know, I agree with the mayor. We don't always agree, but I agree with him on this statement. Senior housing is warranted and needed in our community, especially with the baby boomer generation. Commercial along Tom Genever was promised long ago. I have asked for it at least four times now, actually, probably eight times, maybe 12 times in public hearing rounds, at the Planning and Zoning Commission and at the City Council portions. Nothing, as of yet, has been done from this applicant except thumb their nose at this council for the last, what, five, six years at least? So if you're going to let the developer dictate how this is going to go, you're, again, selling our city and our residents up the river, or down the river. Payment for road improvements, $12,650?
Wow.
That's a mere small sum for multimillionaires, a father-son pair out of Columbia, Missouri, who take advantage of state housing finance, low tax loans, I'm sorry, low loans, low-interest loans, and who take major tax credits from both the federal and state government. For them to pay $12,650 for a $1.7 million roundabout project that nobody in our community wants, no one in north O'Fallon wants, that's .00744% of the project. They're getting off really easy. I think that they need to pony up and pay more of the $1.7 million project, because they are adding to the traffic. We need commercial space to pay for public safety services for this community. Senior citizens require a lot of public safety services when they call 911. How do we leverage and guarantee commercial development? The bottom line is, as I said at the Planning and Zoning Commission, this council must place a condition on this applicant to ensure and to fully implement our commercial portion. For you not to do that is being lackadaisical and against your job and against looking out for the best interests of O'Fallon residents. For those reasons, I cannot support this project unless you put a condition on this applicant, that they build the commercial portion on Lot 4 of this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And before, go ahead, Jamie.
I live across the street from this development, and I have tried numerous times to get residency in this senior facility. They have spectacular, they keep things so nice and up-to-date and clean, and yes, we do need some commercial stuff there for the senior citizens. The Poor Dollar Store and Walgreens get a lot of business because the seniors are all there, but, and I understand that we need the commercial, but we need the senior housing a whole lot worse, so.
Okay, thank you. So, there was no demand that the City Council puts a condition from the P&amp;Z. There was no demand that this council puts a condition that the commercial goes on, so. So, the other thing is, is he was talking about the $12,000. That was only on Phase Three. They've also put money in Phase Two, and they also put money in Phase One, and then when Lot 4 comes in, they're putting another, I believe, Wade, if I'm not mistaken, they told me about $20,000, extra 20, I think it was Lot 4 is what they were saying last week. So, it's, he's thinking they're only paying $12,000 for the whole thing, so it's not, it's, they've paid a lot more into that. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. And Sean?
Guys, if you want to come back up.
And Sean, as far as estate funding that you get, that actually helps make the housing affordable for our seniors, correct? Without that, it would not be affordable.
Yeah, that's the only way. Without it, we'd be looking at $2,000 a unit.
And that's not affordable for our seniors on fixed income, so there's a reason why you're getting that estate funding. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Adamar?
Sean, not only that.
You're not getting off that area.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, just to reiterate what you guys have helped with that, what's the value of the right-of-way that you guys have donated for the circle there?
Between this phase and the other two phases, I think that we're probably up to 45, 60,000.
I think what he's asking, the roundabout, that land, the land that you donated, what was the value of that?
I don't have that information on me, but yeah, that's not part of it, yes.
Could you have that information for us in two weeks?
Unfortunately, our public irritant never really takes any of this into consideration.
Okay.
Yes, I will get that information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anybody else? Go ahead and close the public hearing, and have a seat again. Brings to Bill 7743. Voice for first reading?
Smith.
Voice by Councilwoman Smith, second?
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Councilwoman Smith, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill number 7743, an ordinance approving a final plan for Meadowwood Estates, Phase Three, subject to certain conditions and requirements.
Thank you.
Come on, Mayor. Is this your first time?
Yeah, it's my first meeting, sorry. Next is a public hearing to consider approval of an ordinance amending certain provisions of Title IV Land Use, Chapter 400, related regulations pertaining to development activities within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm here to go through a zoning code amendment we've been working on for a little bit. It kind of touches on a lot of different little things we've been dealing with here in the last few months. Couple of those, it's kind of been up at the council, was a topic that came up at our last meeting with sheds, but a couple of things we wanted to revise while we're in here. I had been getting questions over the years about metal siding being allowed, and we don't really allow metal siding at all, other than in industrial parks, and there was other components out there that we've been made aware of, where it's more architectural metal. So we're putting in some, we put in a new section to allow architectural metal panels up to 30% in the commercial zoning, high-tech and industrial, and we have new definitions for that also. So that's one, one of the changes in here. The other thing is for mixed use in the downtown overlay. So this is just downtown, anything over 10 acres in size, we're going to have a density that would be approved as part of any kind of development plan by the council and P&amp;Z, so there's not going to be a maximum. It would just be part of their development proposal, and that, again, is just downtown, over 10 acres, mixed-use zoning, so very restrictive on where that could be done. Oh, yeah, the sheds, like I mentioned, we've had those come into council here a few, few times here recently. We're going to change that. We're going to increase the size that the staff can permit from 150 to 200 square foot, and if they want to go over that size, it would no longer be a conditional use permit. It would be a variance, it would be a different process, so that's another change that we're proposing. Another one that came up recently is ground-mounted solar panels. We had a large project that was approved, it was just a site plan. For now, this proposal would be, require a conditional use permit if you have ground-mounted solar panels that are over one acre in size. So, I mean, not the panels themselves, but a project that's one acre in size. Would require a conditional use permit in all zoning districts, and this is another one that came up recently, is we had a convenience store that was proposed on C1 zoning. We've come to find out that we permitted liquor stores as a permitted use in C1, so we're proposing to make a conditional use for liquor stores in C1. So those are all kind of current events that we're trying to address here with this one code, with the zoning code amendment.
Thank you. Questions for David? Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious where the 30% of the architectural metal siding came into play, like, how did you land on that number?
Yeah, so, we have a project that just went through last week. It was for a new vet clinic down on Weldon Springs Road, and it's something that they proposed, and the architect there is the person I've been in contact with, and in that specific case, they proposed 30%. So that was this one project we had recently, and that's where we have gotten that number.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Step aside, David, this is public hearing. Mr. Deenoff?
Thank you very much, Arne C. Deenoff, city public advocate. First of all, on the metal siding and aluminum composite materials, we need to consider weather. Sun fades these panels, the color of the panels. Rain has a big impact on these panels. Wind pivots, with the amount of strength of the windstorms that we've been encountering, it pivots these panels. Hail will definitely divot and ding these panels, and I think we're just looking for problems across our city, so I'm opposed to metal siding and aluminum composite material. The size of the shed, from 150 square feet to 200 square feet, I believe in one's enjoyment of their property. I recommend 400 to 500 square feet. The city of Darden Prairie, the city of Lake St. Louis, the city of St. Charles, and the city of Wentzville have no limit on square footage, and they're limit the size of either half of the dwelling, half the size of the dwelling, or 30% of the land acreage. The city of St. Peters allows up to 500 maximum square footage, and the city of Manchester in St. Louis County allows up to 500 square feet. So I think that we also should be 500 square feet or no limit, maybe limit to half of the size of the dwelling. I do not agree with sending this to the Board of Equalization. It's another expense and another fee or tax to file an appeal on our resident. Ground-mounted solar panels that are developed, there's legislation at the state Capitol that's trying to keep them out of any municipal boundaries. I ask approval of a conditional use permit, a CUP, be located for this. I believe that's going to be a part of this ordinance, and I ask that there be a condition that it not be located within 1,500 feet of any residential dwelling. Liquor stores in a C1 zoning requiring a conditional use permit, I'm in full agreement with that. I also would like to see a conditional use permit known as a CPU required in a C1, a C2, and a C3, which would be all of our commercial districts. I think that the public has the right and the opportunity to come before this council, to appear and testify before a public hearing before this council, before any alcoholic sales are allowed, and I think they all should be a conditional use permit. For those reasons, I do not support the metal siding. I support liquor stores getting a conditional use permit in all of our commercial districts, and the ground-mounted solar panels, that be a conditional use permit, and that you put in a caveat of not, not near a residential dwelling outside of 1,500 feet.
Mr. Deenoff? Your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Time's up, sir.
Thank you.
As I've said numerous times, I've lived in O'Fallon for 69 years. And I think our planning people, David Woods, I've known forever. And so, but they do a really good job of making our city look well. And I'm sure that he knows exactly what we need to be able to do as far as sheds and siding and all of those things. Our planning people and our building people do a good job of keeping O'Fallon safe and looking great. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Any other questions for David? Thank you, Mr. Woods. Brings to Bill 7744. Motion for first reading?
Kewen.
Most by Kewen, second by Kaskala. Mr. Kewen, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 7744, an ordinance amending certain provisions of Title 4, Land Use, Chapter 400, related to regulations pertaining to development activities within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments on Resolution 410-2025B? Mr. Kewen?
I just have a comment, for those of you who are unaware, which is probably only one person. Peterbilt Mid-America will be providing mechanical labor for heavy-duty diesel trucks. We do have seven to nine mechanics, and they all work on Ford trucks that the city owns. But they do not work on the heavy-duty trucks, such as what we have with trash and recycling. So that's why we're going out to bid for this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Motion second to introduce?
Kewen.
Most by Councilman Kewen, second?
Kaskala.
Second by Kaskala. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Resolution 410-2025B, a resolution authorizing a multi-year agreement with TLG Peterbilt Mid-America, providing for mechanic labor rates and parts purchases.
Thank you. Questions or comments on Resolution C? Oh, I'm sorry. Motion second to approve?
Adamar.
Kaskala.
It is your first meeting.
I know it. Most by Adamar, second by Kaskala. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
10 yes, 0 no. Resolution B's been approved.
Or is he just shocked that somebody agreed with him?
Questions or comments on Resolution C? Seeing none. Motion second to introduce?
Kewen.
Most by Councilman Kewen, second?
Hurwicke.
Second by Councilman Hurwicke. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Resolution 410-2025C, a resolution authorizing a grant agreement with a recycling partnership, providing for grant funds in an amount not to exceed $540,000.
Motion second to approve?
Kewen.
Councilman Kewen, second?
Hurwicke.
Second by Councilman Hurwicke. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
10 yes, 0 no. Resolution C's been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution D? Mr. Bibb?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this item.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Bibb to table. Do I have a second?
Kaskala.
Second by Councilman Kaskala. Questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution D's been tabled. Questions or comments on Resolution E? Chief? Can you kind of give us a little explanation what this is all about?
Yes, sir. And first of all, I'd like to apologize for trying to get this through really quick. But we were under the impression that the grant was due end of, or the beginning of July. We found out earlier this week that the governor was making the list of who was getting the grant right-of-way. So we figured time was kind of the essence here. So we wanted to get ahead of the game and get our application through before waiting till the end. So what we're talking about tonight is the Blue Shield program. And it's part of Governor Kehoe's Safer Missouri Initiative, which is outlined in his executive order 2503. This recognizes local governments for their dedication to effective law enforcement and community safety. The Blue Shield designation highlights initiatives that enhance public safety, strengthen support for law enforcement, and build lasting partnerships within the community. The issuance of the Blue Shield designation will enable each law enforcement agency to access a state grant for training and equipment from a $10 million fund to be administered by the Department of Public Safety, beginning in 2026. The grant program and funding are still being established, but communities can already apply for the Blue Shield designation and the first 15 were announced earlier this week, like I just hit on. To achieve a Blue Line Shield designation, local governments must meet criteria that demonstrate their ongoing commitment to a comprehensive, sustainable program to fight crime and promote safer community. And with the limited amount of grant money available, we felt as though this needed to be done sooner rather than later for many reasons. But mainly, we wanted our submission in on the front end in case they were parsed out for funding based on submission and approval dates. So, again, I apologize for trying to get that through quick, but we figured, I guess that time was a little...
We'll let it go this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you. Any other questions? Have a motion second to introduce?
Adamar.
Kaskala.
Most by Councilman Adamar, second by Kaskala. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Resolution 410-2025E, a resolution of the council of the city of O'Fallon, demonstrating the city's commitment to public safety, including a commitment to reduce violent crime within the city as part of the state's Blue Shield program.
Thank you. Motion second to approve?
Adamar.
Most by Adamar, second?
Kewen.
Second by Councilman Kewen. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
10 yes, 0 no. Resolution E's been approved. So no further business. This meeting is adjourned at 8:46.